All right, formal meeting of Board of Education on August 16th is called to order. I'd like to extend a welcome to everybody present and to our viewers. Any item that we voted on this evening has been posted required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout two weeks. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that we'll be moving the interim superintendent recommendation up on the agenda right after we hear various public comments. So, start with student testimony. Ms. Houston, are there any students signed up?
We have three.
Okay.
Our first two, Michael Ioffe and Gabby Cozy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, may we start?
You may start.
Awesome, all right.
Green light, red lights.
All right.
Why don't you stop and present your name in public?
Perfect, thank you. All right, good evening, my name is Michael Yoffe. While I understand and respect the rationale of the board in deciding to move the bond to May 2017, I would like to provide a student perspective. Empowering students is a hallmark of Portland Public Schools. I can say from firsthand experience that the district has always put students in their needs first, and we can't lose that sense of optimism and dedication now. I can tell you that my peers and I at Madison, Benson, and Lincoln don't care about politics. My peers and I don't care about polls or numbers. The only thing that my peers and I care about is whether or not the place where we spend nearly eight hours a day, in many cases, the only place where we feel safe, where we get our meals, where we feel welcome and loved, is a place that suits our needs and wants and enables us to reach our full potential. In a number of ways as they currently exist, our buildings are only hurting already marginalized students. None of our three schools are fully ADA accessible. A number of you are champions of special education and know very well that some issues cannot wait because of their extreme importance. Every day that a child has difficulty accessing a classroom or has to learn in a facility where they don't feel comfortable, a facility that hurts them directly or indirectly, is misery. Postponing the bond to May will only postpone the misery of thousands of students at Madison, Benson, and Lincoln who have to suffer because of our inadequate buildings. Keeping the bond in November to me seems like the only significant way to foster trust between the district and the community at large. This is something everyone can get behind, and this is also a chance to make things right. Passing up such a chance would be very unfortunate. It would also be upsetting if we here in Portland wouldn't even have an opportunity to come together in the wake of all that has happened to support all our students and ensure an equitable, safe, and modern learning space for every single individual. While I respect whatever decision the board chooses to make, as a student, a member of Lincoln's Master Planning Committee, and on behalf of my peers and friends from Madison, Benson, and Lincoln here tonight, I kindly request the board to reconsider their decision in light of new testimony. It would be very strongly appreciated, and I assure you that students for decades to come will be extremely grateful for your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Cozy, and I am going to be a sophomore at Lincoln High School. As a PPS student of the last few years, I've seen a lot of things. Unfortunately, some of those things I witnessed haven't been that great. I've been subject to comments due to my race, and I'm constantly watching as other minority groups, including upcoming Lincoln students, struggle to navigate PPS and systems that don't benefit students. As a Lincoln student, I am a minority. However, Madison and Benson have some of the highest rates of minority students in PPS. Being not only a woman, but also being biracial, has caused me to look ahead and take charge of the situations that can be fixed. And some things are not easy to navigate in the world due to intersectionality. However, one of the things that has always remained constant in my life is school. School is a safe place, a place to meet lifelong friends, to grow and to learn. However, our schools are no longer safe. They become places of injury and poison. I cannot drink the water, I cannot walk down the steps without fearing that they will break, or question what would happen to me or my younger brother if an impending earthquake happened. These issues are urgent, they aren't something to be pushed off until May. No bond has ever been passed in May. And if these issues aren't addressed now, they will be swept under the rug yet again until 2020. We need this now, we need to instill trust into the student body, my peers, and tell them that we care about them enough to address the issues now, to vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marin Christensen.
Welcome.
Hello. Board members, members of the press, and the general public. My name is Marin Christensen, and I am one of the two ASB presidents at Lincoln High School. I stand here today, not as a student at Lincoln, but as a member of the Portland community as well as PPS. There's absolute urgency in my message today, which is quite unfortunate. We can't sit by and watch as the well-being of our students and staff is placed at risk every time they enter Benson, Lincoln, or Madison. Our students deserve more, they need natural light and clean water to drink from. Teachers need to be assured that the place in which they choose to work is a safe one, one free from broken steps or falling ceiling tiles looming around the corner. I know that we all agree, something must be done. Where things get a little fuzzy is when it comes to the timeline in which action must be taken. November is key. We have higher voter turnout, eighty-three percent versus thirty-eight percent. Younger voters who are seventy-eight percent likely to vote on yes for this bond, and the vote ten to twenty times more in the general election than they do in the primaries. There are, we basically spend less money overall in November than in May. We have free TV spots and advertising available for November, which we don't have in May, and we're appealing to public interest. People want to help, they want to do what's right. However, when tax season rolls around and the voters have already voted on other measures, their desire to help will crumble away like the walls in our buildings. No bond measure has ever passed in May, ever. As in, it has never worked out. We can't afford for this to be pushed off until 2020, only to delay the rebuilding of Wilson and Jefferson. We need equality among our schools and equity for all students. And the best place to start is by showing students that you care about them enough to vote now, to let the public support their sons and daughters in November.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Now we will go to public comment. Ms. Houston, have you got anybody signed up for that?
We have three.
Okay.
Our first two speakers, Tom Beckett and Eric Leonard.
Greetings, and thank you all for volunteering your time to be here. I appreciate that. My name is Tom Beckett, and for the last thirteen years I've been a theater teacher in Portland Public Schools at Da Vinci and now Cleveland. I've actually been a theater teacher for about twenty-five years and a theatrical artist for thirty-five years. Also worthy of note, I've been a Portlander for thirty-two years, and I've had three sons go through Portland Public Schools. Tonight, I want to talk to you about profit. Profit, which is a singularly strange and fantastical word for anyone in the world of theater to actually talk about. Well, right now, you have operating within Portland Public Schools at least thirty separate businesses, at least ten individual theater companies that have, conservatively speaking, an estimated income of $250,000 with expenditures that usually exceed their income. They are nonprofits in every sense of the word, yet do so without the benefits or support that are commonly accorded to successful and thriving nonprofit organizations. These theater companies are operated by a single proprietor who is the theater technician or specialist, and they're expected to safely manage twenty-five to eighty student performers upon large aging and unmaintained auditoriums. They generally exceed their contracted allotment of three production, each with a month-long pre-production phase and eight-week rehearsal period and two weeks of performances, with an extensive list of duties. As a small business, they must also run a budget. They have to make and implement marketing decisions that have a huge impact on the company's ability to survive, create a budget, rent equipment, and hire outside contractors. There is not a single surviving nonprofit theater company that expects a single person to do all the work you find your theater teachers doing, not one. Especially when five to six hours of that person's day is another full-time job, which we all call being a teacher. In the end, all of these production needs in Portland Public Schools are by design meant to be accomplished on the back of theater teachers and their ability to put butts in the seats. This is because PPS has chosen not to fund any of its performing arts companies. There is no funding for theater, there is no funding for dance, there is no funding for choirs, and there is no funding for band. And for what? This is why I return to the concept of profit. If your PPS theater companies are expected to operate even with a nonprofit zero-budget line, don't you think it's worth asking yourselves the question, what benefit do these theater companies offer the Portland taxpayer? Ask yourselves what really is the ROI of a high school performing arts department? I know the answer to that question because I know the numbers, some of which you see on the sheets I have given you, statistically speaking. But beyond the 1.2 trillion dollars in U.S. revenues from the entertainment industry, beyond the 600,000 jobs I see the individual faces, I watch the careers we generate, I see the resiliency we build, the friendships and communities that arise, the students that come to school just so they can be at rehearsal, the students that party theatrical experience in the scholarships at Harvard, NYU, and Ashland. I could talk all day about these profits, but as a school board, you need to make some decisions because currently, the system that you are responsible for is failing these performing arts communities, and any profit or benefit that you intend to derive from them is in constant jeopardy of failure. I'm going to take a chance here and make an assumption that the members of this board do not believe the primary concern of the public school theater teacher should be the actual generation of profit in a monetary sense. The ultimate profit derived from these small theater companies throughout your public schools is the very livability of our city. So why does this district continue to insist that theater teachers, dance teachers, and music teachers operate with no budget? That's right, zero budget from the district is allocated to our performing arts departments. Why, I don't know. Frankly, I do respect all the work that you guys do up here, but this board and administration love to talk about the arts. And though this board and this administration give lip service support and dutiful thank yous to the hard-working creatives that your performing arts teachers are, though this board and the administration love to see their performing arts students at events, they do so with zero investment in the actual departments and programs that they know are essential to our school communities and to individual students just as much as math, language arts, science, and the athletic teams. Every business or nonprofit or otherwise cannot sustain itself without investment. Close to eighty percent of all small businesses fail within five years, eighty percent. So why do you think those statistics would be any different for your internal performing arts companies? Most of us theater owners are hemdring from a thousand cuts from bureaucratic red tape, cutting corners, spending our own money, or simply burning out as we try to operate with the monetary resources to keep our dilapidated stages filled and our students motivated. In my opinion, it is incumbent upon this board and upon this administration to take a long overdue investment in your performing arts companies. And by doing so, I promise you will reap glorious, fantastical fruits and profit this entire city to no end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me time to speak tonight. I'm a PPS parent, and I've served on the Lincoln Long-Term Development Committee for the last two years.
Want to go ahead and state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Eric Leonard. I'm standing tonight as a representative of the Long-Term Planning Committee. We urge the board to reconsider its decision to postpone the school capital bond from November to May. The research and analysis that we received from PPS over the last several years strongly indicates that a school bond is more likely to pass during a presidential election due to higher voter participation. Moving the bond measure to May would abandon a significant electoral advantage for PPS, one that would be extremely difficult to replicate through other means. It will significantly increase the chances the bond will be defeated. If defeated, the next opportunity will not be until November 2018, and will derail previous bond plan, effective construction schedules, and cost many people their jobs. Child safety and physical safety of the schools are major driver, excuse me, of Portland voter approval of school bonds. The recent PPS drinking water crisis undeniably confirms the need to invest significant funds in our school facilities. A bond measure in November will be perceived by the families of our schoolchildren as a response to that need, and will show that PPS and the board are prepared to lead a decisive long-term action to remedy the problem and protect our students. The urgency and freshness of the crisis will increase the willingness of voters to pass the bond. Taking the risk to wait until May 2017 could push the ability to remedy the situation for many more years while also draining the current operating budget to pay for short-term fixes. Another obstacle that the bond faces is voter skepticism regarding PPS's ability to effectively use bond monies. Roosevelt is scheduled to open this month despite a four-month project delay. It's a spectacular project, and it's an incredible feat that PPS has done to get it open on time. And it will open just before the ballot in November. It will show Portland that PPS, what PPS can accomplish for all its communities when given the proper resources. The complete master planning for Madison, Benson, and Lincoln will provide voters a tangible vision, which PPS lacked during the last bond cycle, and will demonstrate that health and safety issues will be improved and fixed entirely through these upgrades. Roosevelt will assure voters that PPS can realize that vision if given the means. Including the bond measure on November's ballot will give it the best chance of passing, and we urge the board to reconsider its decision on this matter.
Thank you.
And lastly, we have Sean Dalton.
Good evening. I'm Sean Dalton. I am the treasurer for the Friends of Lincoln, the organization that kind of rolled up boosters, PTSO, and the foundation into one to more effectively channel charitable efforts and community efforts to support Lincoln High School. I'm not here to argue the merits of the bond tonight, but like Eric, I'm here to argue for moving the vote back from May until November. I think Eric raised a number of points that I agree with heartily on all points. I think that the importance of a vote in November just can't be overstated. If the bond were defeated in May, I, you probably know where I stand on the bond since I'm involved in Friends of Lincoln, but a defeat in May would just be disastrous. So, I wrote a brief letter, you may or may not have a copy, to the board. The school building improvement bond measure should stand for a vote this November in 2016. The Friends of Lincoln is the parent-run nonprofit organization that gathers and focuses charitable efforts for Lincoln High School's benefit. As an ally of Madison and Benson High Schools, and a supporter of the future bond issues for Jefferson, Cleveland, and Wilson High Schools, we strongly support a November vote. A November vote will more accurately represent the will of the community. I believe that's an extremely important point. Whether the community is for or against it, there will be the highest voter turnout. As we know, this November is going to be a big election, and in May, of course, voter turnout will be drastically reduced. A May ballot could be inevitably skewed by strong interests on either side, and you'd just get an unfair result. So, in fairness to taxpayers and to students, the measure must be submitted, we believe, in November. Also, sufficient planning has been done. Three master plans are complete. While it's true that in every project there must be adequate research, consideration, and thoughtful apportionment, there is also a tipping point when appropriate planning must give way to action. We feel that tipping point is long past. Also, voters are aware of the issue right now. The arguments for and against have been well-publicized, the community is ready to make a decision now. It will be a costly campaign for and against the bond if it goes on until May. We don't need a lot of extra expense, we can spend our money now for the campaign both for and against. In addition, we as parents want to see action on the safety issues currently facing our schools, but we want clarity on financing, and we think a vote this fall would provide that clarity. Finally, a delay until May adds no real value other than creating the appearance of important due diligence, but the voters don't make their decision based on an elaborate financial analysis of the bond. Even I, as a financial professional, just weigh whether it's worth a hundred or two-hundred dollars a year in extra taxes versus safety, safer and improved schools. That's the, I believe, the depth of analysis that the average voter engages in, and so I think it appropriate that they make that analysis and make that decision in November. We trust the board, the school administrators, and the construction managers to arrive at the most productive and efficient way to achieve safer, improved schools, given the resources allocated in the bond. We're satisfied frankly that that's already been done. I'd really like to thank the board for all the work that you do. I understand that the job can be very difficult, and that probably appreciation is not expressed enough. So, to each and every one of you, on behalf of Friends of Lincoln, I'd like to express that gratitude and appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Houston, is there other public comment?
No, that's it.
Okay. So, I know that the principals of some, the high schools are here and want to speak, and so I'd like to invite them up.
Thank you so much for allowing this time. My name's Tammy O'Neil, I'm the principal of Cleveland High School, and this is my nineteenth year serving the children and families of Portland Public Schools.
I'm Patrick Allen, I'm principal at Madison, this is my seventh year there, and I've been in PPS since 1998.
My name's Carol Campbell, I'm currently the principal at Grant, and this is my fourth year at Grant in my thirty-fourth year in education.
Dear PPS board members, as we all know, the state of Portland's public school buildings is abysmal. We have nationally recognized, we have a nationally recognized crisis: lead, radon, asbestos, and a looming earthquake threat. Some PPS high school classrooms are as small as 450 square feet when the current industry standard is 950 square feet, and most cannot support 21st century instructional practices, CTE, and STEAM initiatives. Currently, Portland's high school have too many rooms with no natural light and inadequate ventilation, and our school buildings cause injuries to students and teachers on a regular basis. Teachers fall on broken steps, students step through rotted bleachers, HVAC systems don't work. We have schools where students eat on the floor, where sinks and faucets are routinely broken, and students are exposed to a host of safety and health code issues. This isn't an east side or a west side issue. It is not a high school issue versus elementary. This is a Portland issue, and it impacts learning in our antiquated schools every single day. Portland voters passed a 2012 school bond focused on high schools that is currently funded, funding rebuilds for Roosevelt High School, Franklin High School, Fabian K-8 in partnership with Concordia, and Grant High School. Construction starts next summer. We are deeply grateful to the voters who stepped up to support the school communities. This year, community-based master planning committees worked collaboratively with architects and PPS Office of School Modernization Director Jerry Vincent to master plan Phase Two of a thirty-year school modernization vision. Teams created plans to send to the voters in November 2016 to rebuild Madison, Benson, and Lincoln High Schools. The process was transparent, engaging, focused, with the knowledge that every budget, every dollar matters to Portland taxpayers, and a commitment to equity and future rebuilds for Jefferson and Cleveland and Wilson in 2020. And following that, continuing with a laser focus on rebuilding our elementary and middle schools.
With so many new families moving to Portland, we need to embrace our public schools. Collectively, we tour thousands of prospective families each year. These families quickly judge the city of Portland and our school district by what they see at our schools. Schools are economic drivers, and we need all of our schools to attract and help recruit new leaders, innovators, and their families. Our current schools do not help build confidence in the promise of Portland. Later this month, new kindergarten families will be walking their children to the school house door, wondering if they're exposing their student to neurotoxins for the next twelve years. Middle school students will be in cramped schools with radon and asbestos issues, and high school athletes will be returning to practices in high temperatures unable to drink the water from the track and field drinking fountains. Teachers and students will return to classrooms that have one electrical outlet, outdated science labs, and overcrowded classrooms that were designed for sit-and-get lectures, classrooms that have become barriers to 21st century collaborative project-based learning. East of 82nd Avenue is one of the fastest-growing areas of our city, and Madison High School students deserve an inspiring, safe, and healthy learning environment. Benson High School was once a national model for industry and the trades, but has fallen behind similar schools in Finland or China. Lincoln High School now serves 1,750 students in a building built for 900 students and faces a continued onslaught of enrollment from unprecedented northwest and southwest neighborhood development. We need to build all of our high schools, and then our K-8 schools, and as we thankfully are confident that Portlanders do not want a city where students have access to safe and educationally adequate schools, depending on what neighborhood they happen to live in. As school principals, we represent diverse communities and diverse families from all parts of the city, many of whom do not feel like they have a voice in this process. The PPS board takes its direction from the Portland community, from parent groups, student leaders, neighborhood associations, the business community, and editorial boards. Voter turnout in November can reach as high as eighty percent during a presidential election cycle, with voter turnout in May as low as twenty percent. Giving the highest percentage of voters the opportunity to weigh in the crisis of our school facilities is a better determination of public will. May can also risk getting caught up in any political drama in Salem during the budget cycle, and there's no history of a PPS bond passing in May. Yes, this November presents a controversial ballot with a business tax, housing tax, but it also presents an incredible opportunity to rebuild three more of our high schools and start the abatement of health and safety issues for thousands of students. Social justice requires that we maintain momentum until we rebuild all of our high schools, and then all of our K-5, 68, and K-8 schools. Delays unfortunately hurt that momentum, and it's far too risky to gamble on a May bond passing in Portland.
There will always be good reasons to delay tough decisions and hard campaigns. Portland Public Schools is one of the last urban school districts where eighty percent of the families choose public schools, where students from high poverty backgrounds can leave our high schools and go to our best state in private colleges and universities, are ready to enter the workforce, military, and trades. But we're on a steep precipice where we risk looking back on this moment and deeply regretting that we did not do more. Forcing public school students to sit in classrooms with no natural light, inadequate ventilation, unable to drink water from the water fountains, exposed to radon and asbestos with no room to apply learning or host industry partners is just not acceptable. We stand ready to help the PPS board and community stakeholders prepare for a bond immediately to help run a tight eighty-day campaign for voter approval this November. We have great respect for everyone on the PPS board, and we are deeply grateful for all of your commitment to this work. We don't question any of that, but urge all of you to please reconsider going for a bond this November and reserving May as our backup plan. Student registration, parent coffees, back-to-school nights, parent-teacher conferences, and homecoming events will all help us provide information to our stakeholder groups at the lowest cost possible. Please let us help make this happen during the time of year when the whole city is focused on the opening of school, and we have a known lead radon crisis. This is not coming from one principal or about one school. All of our students are watching our choices. The time is now to be courageous and act for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I could say something, I don't want to argue here tonight, but if anyone would like to call me up, I'd be glad to tell you and explain why I am voting for the bond in May. And a lot of it has to do with that if you put out the bond we had, then we block all the health and safety things that need to happen in eighty of our schools, not just our three high schools. It's a real problem. We could, we could add in 300 million, how much is it? We don't have any idea how much it's going to cost to do the replumbing, to do the masonry of the twenty buildings that are going to fall down, to, we need to... do with the bond, but similar to the ones where you're stepping through, through the stands and so, and on the stairs. Those should all be taken care of, and we push that stuff under the rug. We need to make sure that we're taking care of those safety issues. I, you, you'd have to do it from the board angle before. You'd have to, some principal would call me up, and I'd go argue that they shouldn't have this or shouldn't have that, and it's, it, we need to straighten that out. I wish we knew how much it would cost to take care of the radon, the lead, the lead paint. 200 million? Would that do it? So, do we put that in this bond? I, it doesn't, I, I haven't heard anything where somebody says, "Here's your solution. We could do 950 or a billion dollars in this next bond." I don't think that'd pass, but if you do 750 million with the way we had it set up, then we block those other 80 schools from getting their problems taken care of, too. That's the problem for me, and I, I, I wish someone would come forward with a solution because I had to go, I had to go with the safety. We poison tons of children in our schools, and we need to fix it, and we need to have those buildings so they will withstand a decent earthquake and won't fall down and kill kids. That's what we're trying to do, in my opinion. That's why I voted that way. If, it's, geez, I feel terrible that we're not going forward with the bonds that we had set up. I mean, I really do. It's horrible. We should be, we need to do those things, but this stuff's been pushed under the rug now for 25 years, and it all came out, and we better deal with it and get it straight so we quit poisoning our children and we make our schools safe for all our children, not just in three high schools, which need it desperately, but there are also another 70 schools that need it desperately, too, in terms of the poison in the water, poison on the, in the paint, the poison on the playgrounds. Those things need to be taken care of, and I can't see where we can do both right away, though we can do a whole lot of it in May. It's about six months to do a study to see what it costs. I kind of don't want to go out and tell people in this community that, hey, we don't have an idea what it's going to cost us, but give us a couple 300 million and, and we'll do it. We, it's about six months. If it is the best I can do, isn't that what you told me, Yusef? About six months to do this study to actually find out what the cost of doing those types of things were? That's, that's still accurate.
We estimated that.
Beg your pardon?
We estimated the best.
Yeah, if you can do it, and that was, that's, that's maybe not it. So, that's my, I want to just make sure people understand where I am on it. So, thank you.
I, thanks, Steve. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to testify, the students, the parents, and especially the principals for your leadership and your advocacy for kids. I really empathize with how the community feels in terms of skepticism of where we are and a lack of opportunity to comment on this important issue, and I said that before, so thank you for your advocacy.
On, we're going to go into the interim superintendent recommendation. On July 20th, 2016, the Board of Education adopted selection criteria for an interim superintendent. The application process for interim superintendent was open from July 21st through August 3rd. On August 4th, the board reviewed all applications received and determined five candidates to be interviewed. Candidates were interviewed on August 11th and August 15th with a public open house held earlier this afternoon, which we presented the, our one candidate finalist, Bob McCain, who comes from Centennial and has a long track record of leadership, communication, and team building. So, we now will consider resolution 5325, interim superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Knowles to adopt resolution 5325. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on the resolution?
There is not.
Is there any board discussion?
Sure.
Yeah.
I just want to, some of you were here earlier this evening to meet Bob when he was here. I think that we had a very, well, actually, I was quite pleased with the turnout of the number of applicants that we had, over 11 people interested in serving our district, which I think says a lot for the people's commitment, most of them from the Portland area, but some from outside. And we narrowed that down, as Tom said, to five candidates, which were also really, almost any one of them, I think, would have been a wonderful interim superintendent for us. And in the end, we selected, or I think we're going to select in a moment, Bob McCain, and he comes to us with a lot of experience. He, longtime teacher, administrator, smoke jumper, 11 years of smoke jumping. I think that's a good thing for any superintendent to have, how to jump out of airplanes, right? It's kind of the same thing here. And of course, this time at Centennial, and then since his retirement five years ago, has still remained very active in the community, particularly on the Board of All Hands Raised, working to make sure that all students have an opportunity to be successful in our schools across the city, not just within the district that he used to work in. So, I'm very pleased and excited about the opportunity to have Bob come and work with us while we continue our search for a permanent superintendent.
All right. And I also neglected to mention, Julia Sparza-Brown is not here today, but she is via phone. And also, I'd like to publicly thank Pam and Paul for helping lead this interim selection process, so thank you for that. Any other comments before we vote on this?
I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, it was important to us to go through this process fairly quickly so that we could land an interim superintendent before the start of the school year, but as soon as we conclude this process, and ideally Mr. McCain is on board, we begin the process anew in our search for the permanent superintendent. And we really look forward to engaging everyone in that process. First, in just having conversations about the type of leader that we're looking for and the qualifications and characteristics that are important to all of us across this district, so we look forward to creating opportunities to get out and talk to all different groups of parents, students, community members as a part of that process.
Okay. The board will now vote on resolution 5325. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed?
Yeah.
All opposed? Indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 5325 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
Voting yes. All right. Very good. Welcome, Bob. Tonight, we'll receive our quarterly update from the Bond Accountability Committee. Ms. Carroll, would you like to introduce this topic?
Yes, I would like to invite Kevin Spillman of the Bond Accountability Committee to present the report. Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the Bond Accountability Committee to give our quarterly report. The BAC met on July 20 at Benson High School, and we continue to be pleased with OSM Officer School Modernization staff and their approach to transparency and clarity. The staff presentation materials and all the meeting minutes, I'm sure you all know, are regularly posted on the website. The, the meetings are publicly noticed, and we have usually a huge crowd of three or four public, members of the public. At this time, PPS staff is managing work at Roosevelt High School, construction at Franklin High School, construction at Fabian, construction at, on seven schools in the IP 2016 program, behind the scenes, working on design development for Grant High School and design work for IP 2017. The bond program, I think you'll recall the graph I showed you a few months ago of the activity in the bond program. It's absolutely at its peak in construction activity at this time. Summer 2016 billings will exceed $18 million per month, and if you think about that, that's during this summer season, about 10% of the entire bond will be put in place in the field. Even after this summer, between now and September 2017, the activity continues at a high pace, and billings will still average about $13 million per month. And again, you're probably sick of hearing this, but this is all in the context of a very challenging design and construction environment in this region. With that introduction, I'm going to have to confess that most of my report will be out of date because our, our meeting was a month ago, and $20 million has been put in place since then, so a lot has continued to happen, but I'll report nevertheless on where we were at that time. The total bond program increased over the last quarter by a little over $400,000 to almost $551 million, of which 39% or $217 million had been spent. These increased funds came from earned interest, a small grant from the Energy Trust, small transfer from FAM facilities, and most notably, I think, $90,000 from Franklin alumni to help fund the brick veneer that had been removed from the project in the loosely termed value engineering exercise. Contingencies, reserves at the program level amount to about $10 million, and there's little doubt that that amount is insufficient for the rest of the program, particularly after you consider a transfer that's going to be requested today. However, there are, the budgeting exercise usually trails real time a little bit. There are some savings from earlier IP work that have not yet been transferred to reserves, and about $11 million is currently allocated to IP 2017, 1819, which could become available for other uses if necessary, if that work scope were to be postponed. We also expect some additional bond premium from the next bond sale in 2017. Quantifying that is difficult, maybe is impossible, and you recall the bonds, the board has already allocated $2.8 million of that for Roosevelt. The, on budgets and schedules, and this is where the report will be most out of date, particularly on schedules, because so much is happening in the field. The IP work at Cleveland High School has been challenging due to unforeseen conditions, and I think Jerry Vincent will be talking about, he'll talk about most of this, actually. That project will be definitely over budget as a result, but the overall IP 16 budget is forecast to be sufficient in total, and that's partly to, due to the fact that a couple of those projects, if you recall during the bid period, were canceled. Construction schedule at Franklin remains on track for a May 2017 building completion. The site will be complete July 2017. However, the forecasted cost for the project now exceeds the budget, and I won't go into too much of that. Jerry Vincent will be presenting a request for a transfer of reserves on that. What's important, though, about Franklin is that in many ways, it's become kind of the pilot project for this bond program in the sense that it highlighted some unforeseen conditions that may or may not be replicated in the other older high schools, and there are certainly lessons to be learned there, and OSM has learned those lessons. They have worked hard to facilitate communication and exposure of the Roosevelt and the Grant design and construction teams to the experience at Franklin, which certainly should help on those projects. There's been significant construction progress at Roosevelt, and much of Phase One will be open for the school as planned. Some of Phase One will not be open at the time of school opening, and I'm sure Jerry will talk about that. The level of activity on that site is quite astonishing, 250 to 300 workers on a daily basis. Work has, has started on Phase Two, which is largely the historic part of the school building, and so that a lot of the destructive, noisy work will have been done before school comes back later this month. Project contingency at Roosevelt is now less than 3%, and we continue to have concerns about that, given the, again, the likelihood of some level of unforeseen conditions, but we're certainly hopeful that that will be sufficient. Most remarkably at, at Roosevelt, given, especially given the fact that staff and students were present for, obviously during the school year, and as many as, as I said, 300 construction workers there, there's not been a single accident on that project, which is, everyone involved should take pride in that. Construction progress at Fabian is going well, and still over $2 million remains in that project contingency. And unlike the modernizations, Fabian's a ground-up project, so the, the likelihood of unforeseen conditions is much less, and certainly now that we're out of the ground, that's certain, that's an area where unforeseen circumstances can arise, and we're through That project is also accident-free. At the time of our meeting, the design-construction teams on Grant High School were working hard to reconcile schematic design estimates, and what that means is that the design team has their estimating experts, and now we have a CMGC onboard with their estimating skills, and no matter what combination you have there, they never agree, and you can guess which is the higher. Nevertheless, this is part of the CMGC process, and the reconciliation should go a long way to avoiding the buyout challenges we've suffered at some of the other schools. Design work for IP 17, which is currently budgeted at $10 million, is proceeding, and one of the lessons learned from previous IP work is that there's been a greater emphasis on pre-assessment of existing conditions. Whether or not that work actually proceeds to construction next year will depend on two things, actually. One will be financial resources, where we are with our program contingency, and two, an examination of district resources during next summer. I think there's an increasing recognition of the load that the district has put on itself for next summer with move-in at Franklin High School, Phase Two at Roosevelt, Fabian, move-in and out at Marshall, et cetera. This is, this is a substantial exercise. As before, we've, we looked at the, quote, equity aspect of the program. Student involvement remains positive. There were 10 summer interns working on various projects this summer. Employment of apprentices continues to exceed the goal at, stands at 23%. MWE SB has been improving, at least we think it's been improving, as you know, with the district has started using district has started using some new software. And there's been, been some challenges of integrating some of the old data, but the current data is certainly an improvement over the past. And now reports 12.3% of the contracts go to MWESB firms at this point. I mentioned safety. The Franklin High School is the only major project to have suffered any kind of accidents, and, and they have all been minor, thankfully. A few weeks ago, you had your performance auditors come report to you, and, and we have looked at their report and generally agree with their recommendations. However, we told you in previous years that we were really going to spend time tracking those recommendations, and frankly, we've fallen down on that largely due to time pressures, so much other stuff going on. But it's pretty clear that we need to do that, and once this summer level of activity calms down a little bit, we'll, we'll engage staff in, in doing that. There are some differences of opinion on some of those recommendations, and I think we might be able, might be helpful in trying to resolve some of those for the benefit of the program. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Could you explain about the article in the newspaper about the lead at Franklin during the construction? Did we monitor that? You said there now, now we're going to be with respirators and stuff, but.
Yeah.
What situation surrounding that was? Why we, was there actually lead? Were they not doing it correctly? Did they straighten it out?
Director Buell, that article appeared since our meeting, so we didn't look into that. I'm sure Jerry will be happy to. What I would say is, though, my understanding is that it was a subcontractor activity.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
So, I just wanted to say, appreciate your candor about the assimilation of the information from the performance audit, and that you do intend, as the Bond Accountability Committee, to go back through those. And I just want to say, I think that's really important work as a bridge to the next bond, and making sure that we are really tracking those recommendations as we look at ways that we want to do things a little bit differently in contracting practices or other aspects of the bond. So, to the extent that the BAC can get involved in that and make recommendations to, to us on that, that's really helpful.
Right. And, and we commend the board for engaging such exhaustive performance audit at appropriate times. Lots of times, those are done at the end, and that's like, you know, shooting the wounded at that point, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
For all your work.
And thanks to the team.
All right. We also have our capital bond update this evening. Mr. Wad, introduce this topic.
Yes, I'd like to invite Jerry Vincent, Chief Modernization Officer, to present this update. Thank you.
Good evening. We have our presentation in three parts tonight. We're going to talk about our large projects and the success on some of those, and we're also going to talk about Franklin. We have challenges. And we kind of look back through the presentations, and our summer work is so great, and we haven't shown it as much as we should. So, we have a video that we're going to switch to showing kind of a collage of the work that's going on this summer on our projects. And then, we've been having a theme for our presentations, either from you telling us what you want to see. And tonight, we came up with our own theme at OSM. We're going to open the first high school facilities, brand-new in the district, in over 50 years. So, I asked Philippe to come down, and we're going to walk through some slides, telling you about Roosevelt, telling you about the excitement. And I told him, you go ahead and tell him about the nightmares. That's fine, you know, because his staff is solid, and they're saying, you know what? It's been 80, 90 years. It's good for another 80, 90 years. We're going to get through this. You can't remodel a kitchen and get it done on time. So, we're going to get through this. So, they've been a great partner to work with. So, with that, I, I want to start our presentation. Fabian, as you heard Mr. Spellman say, has just been an incredible project for us. We just kind of look for wood when we talk about Fabian and knock on it. We are under budget, if you look at our contingency. Like I said, we've had 2% of change orders on this project to date, and we still have another 2 or 3 million left in contingency. So, we just want to show you the improvement. This is May 2nd, and I don't know if it really does it justice on what's going on, but the slabs are down in those areas, and they're barely starting. The walls coming up on May 2nd. On July 27th, the walls are up in the, is there an arrow on here? Am I going to end up bumping it? On the gymnasium, we have full two-story structural steel in. And in the lower left-hand corner classrooms, the deck is on top of the second level already. That's just in July. And then, from July to May 2nd, this is where, we'll go back so you can see it from this perspective. That was May 2nd, coming out of the ground. That's July 12th. Right in front of you, the first building in front of you is the commons area where they eat, and then just behind that is the gymnasium, two-story classrooms all around. And two weeks later, from July 12th, you see the walls going up and the structural steel on the classrooms. So, we have two cameras on site that give us live feed all day long. So, there is so much going on at Fabian right now. The general contractor is just knocking the ball out of the park. No, no safety issues, no accidents, and it's our highest union percentage project of any of them going on right now. So, they're 33% complete. And as Kevin said, when you can get out of the ground, that's where a lot of your problems are going to be. And then, when your structural steel is your next problem, and all the infrastructure, we're past that point. We, we are happy. We're not confident. We are not overconfident. But in terms of how the program works, and one program that might take money from a program, and one that's in position to deliver money back, we feel very good about Fabian and the work they're doing. Schedule-wise, they're six days over now. We've got a year to go. That, that's nothing, you know? That's within the realm of saying on schedule, but we want to be transparent. We're six days over. We'll get that back in no time. And like I said, 2% is the change order rate to date. You saw in the photos, all the masonry block walls are going up in the gym and cafeteria, and a lot of the key infrastructure items that could either lead from permitting or could lead to unforeseen costs are done, and that's why they're here. The storm drains, sanitation, sewer plumbing, electrical, all the drainage system for the field and grading of areas, those are the gotchas. There was something in the ground. We are through that phase. Steel has arrived on site, going up. You see the decks going in. And that part over on the far left that you saw was, below was our kindergarten and our pre-K for our concoria partner, with, that part was in the lower left-hand side of the slide. Second floor, the slabs are poured, the areas are going up. The second floor is where our steam and our art classes are going to be held, and the computer labs up there. And it's just been a pleasure to go out and see the site and work with the team on the contractor end as well as ours. So, Franklin, here's June 3rd. If you kind of look in the lower left-hand corner, that's the gymnasium building is what it's being called. I, I hope they come up with a different name on site, what they want to call it. It does have a brand-new gymnasium, and it does have an auxiliary gymnasium, and it has a very nice weight room in there. But it also has a culinary arts in there. It has a biomedical facility, and there's other things that are happening in that building. It's a large, from the very bottom, four-story tall, and there's a lot going on in there. So, you just see, we're just starting to close the roof in on there. If you look at the permanent buildings, that gray is the existing roof. We haven't even started to take all that off. And then, in your upper right is the performing arts, that doesn't have a top on it yet. That's June 3rd. This is August 1st. Not only is the gymnasium building completely roofed, but the whole side has been prepped for water resistance. You see the new, the old building coming off, that old roof, I'm sorry, coming off the old building. New one is going on. We're putting roofs on. There is so much activity out here, and we are at a minimum, over 200 workers a day, but, you know, 250 on this range. Lot of activity going on in here. They are on schedule to complete, and that schedule is actually end of May, early June. We've always tried to have that. What if we had the summer to move in, mobilize furniture and equipment, training? They're on that schedule right now, this time. So, with Franklin, and we've mentioned this in a number of presentations, it's been our most challenging project. There's three or four different types of construction occurring inside the facility. It had unforeseen out in the, on the site, in the ground, in the bedrock, much more espesos that we had to uncover. And, and so, it's been challenging, but you're going to see some slides from Grant. We're going to show you what Kevin's talking about, on how we've done lessons learned from Franklin. I've mentioned this before. We took our Grant Construction and Architecture and OSM team and Roosevelt Architecture Contractor OSM team, and we went and toured Franklin, and they showed us. They showed us everything. We're going to show you how that's coming back to us, on what we think is going to help provide Grant and Roosevelt. Roosevelt to maintain budget as they get into the old building, and Grant to try to stay on budget. So, we have a resolution coming for you tonight. We'll talk about that item afterward. It's what we've met with the contractor, met with our team, met with the architect, look at the unforeseens, look at the finish line, and what we think replenishes the contingency in order to finish this project off. We are well into the 1915 building right now, and completing a lot of the seismic work. This full ground to top of the second floor seismic walls that we, that we even saw, there's 31 on site that take all the load-bearing, the lateral walls. And so, we, we've completed most of those. There's about two or three sectors that don't have them all in. And we actually did a video documentation, and also KATU came out and filmed this a couple of weeks, and going to run it September 1. That shows all the work that's going on seismically at Franklin. It was a great snapshot, because we're not there at Roosevelt yet, and Grant's under design, and within two months, all this will be covered up. You know, we'll start drywalling it in, and you're not going to see it. So, they saw it at a great time, and they said they're going to air that September 1. And you'll, you'll see the whole process of the sheer walls we're putting in, and how it covers the lateral load, and everything to do with URM, enforced, reinforced, unenforced, and we're going to, it's, it's depending on how much they show, you know, of it. We really talked to it, and you'll see it. We're going to go back out and do our own and get it on our website before it gets all closed up. So, people can see the kind of deep dive. You don't see it when you're driving by the site. But it's one of the major things that we're doing under full modernization that addresses seismic. Media center in the library, the work has begun in there. It's actually further along than even here, and we're, we're framing in the CTE and Makerspace framing, I mean, continues. So, the brick that, that Kevin was talking about, when we demolished some of the existing buildings in Franklin, someone had a great idea before me. Can we take the brick, clean it up, repurpose it, put it back on the new building, so it ties together? And we said, well, there's a cost to that, and the Alumni Association came up with $90,000. We cleaned that. We're putting that brick right back on the walls right now. So, it's a great story, and old and new, and they come together. You just saw the roof going in, and now we've got brick veneer on two sides. And everything inside is all what we're calling, by December will be what we call finish. Will be done with a lot of the rough-in, and it'll be into the finished product. It's what Kevin also talked about. You're controlling more of your destiny at that point. We are at the end of the, the, most of the abatement, the unforeseen, and where it's kind of what we call positive construction each day. There'll still be a little zinger here and there, but there's, you know, the demolition, the abatement, the unforeseen. We've passed a lot of that. So, that's why we feel comfortable, not totally confident. We feel comfortable that we've seen the worst, and we'll talk about that during the resolution. Over 200 workers a day. It's actually fluctuated 225, 250, depending on the activity that's going on. And nothing significant on safety. We have had four minor injuries pulled, you know, strained back, what have you. A lot of those were apprentices, and we're on schedule to open in 2017. So, I want to talk about summer improvements. The roofs at Cleveland, and we, we're over budget, but I think when you see the photos, I think it's some of the best money we've spent. We are hearing the community say, make our sites, not just leaky roofs, make them safe. And we're going to show you some photos here. We came across some just dangerous roof situations at Cleveland, and we're making them whole. It's costing us money, but we're making them whole, and, and the students and staff of those facilities wouldn't know it was there, and probably won't know that it's fixed when they come back. But you'll see the photos here. So, this is it. There was a type of substrate on the roof that they used tekton panels with. They're very durable, and it's a great way to do things 50, 60, 70, 80 years ago. But when they hold water for year after year after year, when we took the surface off and looked at it, you see that arm reaching in there. He's pulling out basically straw. It's all loosened up, the tekton, so it really had no strength. And we did a load test on the roof. It was at a level where we've got a pretty good snowstorm here. It would be different, it'd be, it'd be worrisome. So, the roof needed to come off in its entirety. So, you see, you go from straw here, and some of the damaged spots on here, to, and it really doesn't show as well as it should. That's a whole, brand-new, stand-in-seam metal roof on here that's good from there 70, 80 years. So, we fixed this problem, and this was a safety issue, not just a leaky roof issue. This was a safety issue, and we're fixing that. And in the lower photo, you see us going back over the top of that and making the roof whole again, and making it new. The elevator at Chavez and Scott, it's going to plan, and the students are safely, are going to be coming back to school. We have other elevator projects going on. The Chavez ones, as you may know, some of our elevators are exterior to the building. We have a couple there right in the center, and those are difficult to do in just 62 days of summer. So, the first summer, we do all the preparation, take the elevator out, work on what's called the cab. We get the thing set up, and then the next summer, we go back in, and then we drop the elevator in. So, some of these are two parts. It probably didn't get as messaged as good as it could. Some people thought we didn't get done in time on one of these, and it always was a two-year, whereas most of the whole point of summer improvement is trying to get things done in the summer. At MLC, Selwood, Evernathie, and Jefferson, we have, right now, we're down to our final two weeks again, just like we are in everything. We've been doing work on seven schools. It's been safe. There's been no injuries. And we have a team that does our summer work that just, you know, they're, they're just mighty. They just fly and get this work done. So, you know, when you, I don't want to, this is detail, so I'm not going to read this whole thing, but I want to show you what we've learned from Franklin. We've done, 46% of destructive testing was performed not only by MWESB contractors, but we did over $150,000 more destructive testing on Grant than we had done on Franklin early on. Did the same kind of thing on the 1921 building at Roosevelt. Anderson Coles is our CMGC for the project. They've been doing explorations and discovery. They're not just working with the architects on the cost test. They're not just working with the architects on the cost estimate for the design. They've been out there this summer doing this kind of work right here. We've been having regular meetings. We've been starting to work with jurisdictional or the project. There's certain jurisdictions. We, if you recall, we share the site with the city. And so we've been going through some of that. It's not, it's been a challenge, I'll say that. And next April, we're looking at to bid this out. And we have over one hundred core samples, which means we're doing, that's nerdy, but it means we're doing a lot of testing. We're trying to find out now at budget time going in, how much Grant looks like Franklin instead of figuring it out at change order time during the project, which also costs us time. This is just minor, but we found this out from Franklin. When you get your new windows, you try to put them in, you go in and try to anchor them into the sides. There's nothing there anymore from the anchoring to, to affix them to. So they're literally doing anchoring tests. And this machine right here just literally pulls on the anchor that we set into the wall until it fails. So we can find out what the strength is. And we're doing all this kind of testing now. We did not, you know, did not know to do this before. So we're, we're learning, we're evolving, you know, as O S M and as a project teams. Same kind of thing. We did pit tests outside. Apologize. We did pit tests outside to remove, there's pipes that you, that connect to the building that most cases are asbestos wrapped. Not sure if they are or not. So we're going down, taking, getting the pipe, cutting it open, taking a piece of it, having it tested. And even in the windows, we're doing lead scraping and painting and having it tested just to confirm that it is which, in most cases it is, but we just need to know. And we're also starting to do the mock-up for one of the windows to make sure they fit correctly. Now, this is called magnesite. This is probably almost a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars we ran into at Franklin. So it was one of the big items. We had about one point three million in asbestos, beyond, beyond what we thought we were going to hit. This is a magnesite flooring that's underneath the other levels of flooring. This is actually on Grant now. We, we surmise that we'd probably have it there and we do. And we're going in, we're cutting it up, we're taking samples of it. We're confirming that is, we're confirming where it is. And then you look at options on when to remove it and when to encapsulate it. And they're doing that right now. So it's just, it's a way of saying, there's a lot that Franklin has taught us. It is our pilot project and we think we've learned from it. And we're applying it to Roosevelt nineteen twenty-one building and we're applying it to Grant as well. I wanted to switch to our, our theme tonight. And I'm so glad we have the Principal Roosevelt Philippe with us. We have, I just, a little fun fact, so I looked up here and, and I ran some people that were longtime Portland people, didn't know this. Roosevelt was originally named James John High School. I don't know who all knows that on the, on the board. It was built nineteen ten, opened in nineteen eleven. And first graduating class had four people in it. And then when James John's closed in twenty-one, it opened up the following year as Roosevelt. And today Roosevelt welcomes students representing twenty-nine countries. Now, we're currently on budget and it's what Kevin said. We have our three percent contingency. We're nervous, but we are on budget and with that contingency. Phase one, this is a four-phase project for those that don't know. Phase one is the new construction. Phase two is the renovation. Phase three is the fields. And phase four is the new makerspace. We're going to try to see if we can combine that with phase three, but we need to get it finished drawing and get it in the city and out of the city in time. Otherwise, it'll be a four-phase project. Of that, just a small portion of phase one is going to open twelve weeks late. And of that portion, most of it is from a safety issue that we've talked about before. Where the contractor needs to set their crane for the phase two work of nineteen twenty-one, the boom swings over the new cafeteria and five classrooms. And, and that's just not safe. I mean, we're not, we don't want to do it. Our risk managers don't want to do it. OSHA doesn't want to do it. The contractor doesn't want to do it. That's just, that is what it is. We are, we are blessed that there's facilities available for them. We still have the old building with the, with the cafeteria online with classrooms up above. That last portion of that phase one will be, we're saying the end of the year. Some of it might come on sooner, but, but we're saying the end of the year. So what that means is in the first year, fifty percent of the time, the contractor's done about sixty-four percent of the work that's been completed. And seventy percent of the work that's been completed in the first twelve months of a twenty-eight month project. So sixty-four percent is done. We are in the process of finishing that last, right there, six percent at this time. A couple of things have caused some delays. The contractor is just working on it. He's not, he's not complaining about it. But when the school year got moved back a week, that cost us ten days to the contractor because they worked nights in the weekends and they worked, they would have worked Labor Day. So that, that programmatic change, we already had a contract with them. It affected that. The two ice snow days we had in early January was about five days before the site had dried up enough and was safe enough to work on. You know, we'd probably make it right there alone. And, and then early on in the project, my understanding is we put a templex down of portables. There was, there was, it was too noisy or the, the adjacency of the construction to the work. We tasked them to get those set infrastructure to them and everything and still stay on their schedule. So we put a lot of, and they're still doing all their tours. They're still doing their student engagement. So it's just been a great effort by the contractor out there. It lasts three, four weeks, they're over two hundred and fifty. You know, they've been working six days a week for the last year, but they just stepped it up to seven days a week and a swing shift to try to land this thing. And why don't you tell us about what you and your staff feel when you go out there and when you look? It's okay.
Well, I think the pictures will, will, will show you what, how incredibly inspiring the new spaces are. And I've had a chance to tour the site several times. And each time, I'm amazed by how busy and focused and attentive everybody seems to be. I think there was one injury over the last year, plus somebody tweaked their back, which is just mind-blowing. Every time I step into my wood shop in my house, I leave with at least three Band-Aids. So I'm not sure how they've done it. But should we talk about some of the photos?
Please, yeah, please. Let's, let's go. So go ahead and explain what's going on.
So this is, this is an aerial view. The, the big white thing over there, there is not Cirque du Soleil. It's our tent.
The infamous tent.
That we've used for P E. You can see how much work has been done in the back. All, all of those buildings have a roof. I mean, they will be inhabited in the next week and a half or so. And that is the building, the nineteen twenty-one or nineteen twenty, I'm sorry, nineteen twenty-eight building that is now fully under construction. So one of the challenges that this poses for us is the fact that we basically moved from two primary buildings last year to about one, two, three, four, five, about seven different buildings that we will need to supervise every day.
The C building has the, has the gymnasium and the auxiliary gym. And it has classrooms. This is the one that needs to come online. And, and you know, and just one more thing that Kevin spoke of. The contractor wasn't supposed to start this building until September. Because of the amount of abatement, they just thought we should just, just push it and see if we can get that done as well over the summer while no one's here. And, and they're about seventy, seventy-five percent complete with the, with the abatement in there and the demolition from the noise standpoint, but also do abatement while they're off campus. So this does not show up very well, but it's a great photo. Not only has the architect designed shade louvers, but on top of, I am so sorry. On the top of each shade louver, these are solar panels right here that just got installed today and yesterday. The solar panels are going on on top of the shade louver. This is actually spinning down onto the site and we're getting credit for that energy. So it was part of the planning process of the DAG and this is it in all of its glory. So it's a multi-function, it's a shade louver, but it's also solar. Go ahead and talk about this.
I mean, this is, this is our new gym. It will have the capacity to seat seventeen hundred students. There's, this is actually the auxiliary gym, is it not?
This is the.
Or the main gym. You'll be able to see this, what the center court looks like. It's far more polished now. Would love to invite you to our first volleyball game in September, first basketball game. When I, when I walked in for the first time, I literally paused. I, I, I needed a minute to take a breath. It was truly breathtaking. The only thing that is missing, I think, are banners hanging from the rafters. And I'm sure those are coming in the years to come. So we're really excited about the gym and I know that our students will be as well.
The, the, the upper photo up here, when you are in the second story of the classrooms, you walk down a hallway and there's windows. We look down into the gym from up above and it's, it's quite a view. We can't wait to take you all on a tour there.
So this is the center court. We just went through a redesign process with Nike last year and they solicited our input and our feedback. And this is our new school crest that I think really honors the St. John, St. John's community, the legacy of Teddy Roosevelt and his environmental work. And, and then of course, the, the clock tower and all that that symbolizes for us.
Here's your auxiliary gym, which is right now being used for the next few months. And this was always the plan. This is the staging area for all the furniture. Everything's coming in the auxiliary gym. They're going to start off with the new gym, but the auxiliary gym has all the furniture coming in before it goes out to the sites. So that's what we're using this area for. So I was lucky to get a picture on the day when the, when the little telescoping bleachers arrived for it, but none of the furniture arrived because you can hardly walk in here right now.
This is our weight room. It is just absolutely incredible. It is bright, it is spacious. The windows are, allow for a lot of natural light. The equipment is state-of-the-art. I, I had the great fortune of seeing what our old weight room looked like in the basement. Literally, there was, it was stuffy, it was moldy, it was, there was, there wasn't a single bench that didn't have that yellow foam coming through it. And we still managed. I mean, and that's, that speaks a lot to, to the resiliency of our students and coaches. But this is what our students deserve. This is what communicates to them that they matter, that they're valuable, that we see the potential in them. And it will give us the tools that we need to really do as much as we can with the potential that our students hold, so.
Just on the other side of this wall, and it had some, some things in there. It was perfect for a half a day and they started doing more work again. There's, there's a dance studio on the other side of this. And it's got tons of daylighting, high ceilings, full-height mirrors all the way down the one side, wood floor. I mean, it's, it's just gorgeous. These are prototypical classrooms. Furniture's arriving, but it's not in there yet. You can see the kind of level of completion we're starting to get to on some floors. Some other floors still have a lot of work to do in the next two weeks. Wanted to see, wanted you to see some of those. And then there's a typical science lab. Just took a picture of there, they're completing a lot of those. So there you have it. And that's actually, isn't it your old office area right there?
I, I didn't recognize it, but I think you're right.
I think it is. So they're largely done a lot of the abatement. Like I said, in addition to trying to land an accelerated phase one, they just saw. And, and I'll, I'll just say it, you know, when, when May came around and our world kind of changed from environmental standpoint, they found a way to step it up and get into these buildings over this summer and try to get the, a lot of the abatement work done while, while the staff and the kids were gone. So here we have it. A lot of the, most abatement's done. The demolition's even further along than this. And this is a flyer. We'll do it again next year. This is a flyer that we got site input from to go out to the parents and the community saying, this is what we look like when you come back. You know, we're also going to do this for Franklin and phase two Roosevelt next year and Fabian kind of help. Because of the amount of construction, we really couldn't do an orientation and walk them around. It wasn't safe. So this was the best way to give them an orientation of what was going on with the site and where to find us now. And the administration's not over where it was anymore. You just saw that demolished, we're over here. And here's kind of the flow and the pattern of how you go around the site. Really glad we got site input because we focus on the things that we think are important. Then we run them by them and they tell us some other things. And together, we put it together and we sent this flyer out.
And I just wanted to take an opportunity to kind of shift our focus away from the buildings and onto the kids and wanted to share a few celebrations that I will be sharing with my staff next week as well. But I think they're important for you to know because we're not waiting for the new building to be finished before we ensure that our students are graduating on time and are being successful. And we're already beginning to see some of the fruits of, of our labor. So if you don't mind. Three years ago, our cohort graduation rate was fifty-three percent. Two years ago, we got it up to sixty-two percent. We're hopeful that last year's cohort graduation rate will be, will be up as well. I think even more exciting is what, what's happening with our freshmen. Again, three years ago, seventy-one percent of them finished ninth grade on track. Two years ago, seventy-four. And then last year, eighty-one percent of our freshmen finished the, the year on track. So the message to my staff next week will be, there will be lots of distractions next year with, with the construction around us, with the political atmosphere, the, the lead and whatnot. Our job is to stay focused on our students and making sure that the kids in front of us are being successful and are progressing. So I'm, I'm feeling really proud of that. Just a few things about our reality for, for next year. As I mentioned, we're moving from three buildings to six buildings, from seven floors to nine floors. We didn't have a single locker room last year. This year, we'll have two, from six restrooms to twelve, from forty-eight classrooms to sixty-two classrooms. And our staffing level is more or less the same. So that presents all kinds of both challenges and opportunities. There were, we're problem-solving. As Jerry mentioned, we're down to the wire. We're not able to tell our families literally where exactly registration will be because I have to wait until Thursday to figure out, to, to find out from the contractors if we'll be able to use certain parts of the building. Now, we'll be ready for registration. All of our families will, and students will be taken care of. But our, some decision-making, some communication just has to wait until the, the very end.
We still have the tent, right?
We'll, we'll, we'll make it work.
So what I, what, what this slide tells me, in September, once we can get the doors open, we are going to meet in some of our departments here, you know, O T L and O S P. We're going to meet with Franklin and we're going to meet with Roosevelt monthly so we can prepare for next year. You heard Kevin talk about it. It's a big year. It's professional development. It's meeting with, with the departments here to talk about how we staff up accordingly. Franklin's needs are different than Roosevelt. Roosevelt has much more square footage between their original two oh two, two hundred and two thousand. And I think where they're ending right now, about two hundred and seventy-some thousand, where Franklin might have been like two forty and now around two eighty. So they have so many more new buildings. So their facilities needs are going to be different. You don't treat them the same, but they're going to have the same issues. And how do we unpack and how do we come into these facilities next year? And we're going to meet with them, our I T folks. We're going to do a download in September on lessons learned of the last three weeks and the next two weeks. And we're going to try to roll a plan out that takes next summer on with vengeance. And we're set up to, to do it because it's just like Kevin said, we have five to six moves next summer versus just one phase one this year.
And lastly, just a little bit of information that I shared with, with Youssef and some other folks a couple of weeks ago and really feel supported from a number of central office personnel here. I know that Mr. Weatherroy is working to provide us with an additional campus monitor, I hope, just to account for the increased supervision challenges that we'll have. We're working with Office of Teaching and Learning to, to receive some, some time and support to provide professional development for our staff because we want to make sure that our teachers can make the best use of these new facilities. One thing that I want to put on your radar that is, is a concern of mine is, is the absolute need to increase our maintenance staffing as soon as possible. We simply do not have enough custodians to take care of this new facility. There's a lot more glass, there are more restrooms, there are more locker rooms. I feel the, I feel the weight of the responsibility that this building has in terms of ensuring that for the next hundred years, it is kept in, in absolutely pristine condition and that other generations have the benefit. And, and that really starts day one. It starts this year, it continues next year. So that additional maintenance support is absolutely critical. And I, and I'm working closely with Oscar and Antonio to make sure that we have the flexibility to ensure that at least one administrator is on campus at all times next year. I think that'll be really important. So I guess the last thing that I want to mention is that I was absolutely inspired to walk into the, the new spaces. Our students will appreciate the value that we are providing for them and the potential that we see in them. And I also want to say, say that I stand with my other principal, high school principal colleagues and to say that all of our students across the district deserve these facilities as soon as possible. So thank you for, for your time.
So Philippe.
Yes.
On the, the maintenance. So did you get additional maintenance resources?
Not next year. Not for next year. My custodial staff is remaining the same. So that is, that is, that is a, I would say it's kind of a, it's a red flag. It's a, it's a significant issue.
So it seems like you would have an immediate.
So it seems like you would have an immediate need since you have like twice as many restrooms.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's something that the board needs to deal with.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing that. And it's just something that I think needs to be part of all future considerations. I mean, this is a new, we do not, I do not, we cannot use the new building the same way that we've been using the old building. That would be, that would not honor the investment that the community has made. And so with a little bit more staffing support, we will be able to do a lot more.
So Yusef, is that something that you can begin a discussion?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we met with Philippe and representative of almost every department in the district in order to provide the support needed. Oscar and I believe Sue, they were appointed as point of person to coordinate all this work and come back to me with a report of what's needed to Roosevelt of whatever needs they have. So once I have that report, I can answer it. But we definitely want to support the school and make sure that the school is taken care of next year. When the school opens, it should be in good shape and we should have all the support needed there.
Okay, thanks.
So we talked about the performance audit and how we're working to take those recommendations and build them into our future planning, but also on this operational side of all of our capital investment. I mean, we need to make sure that you and your team are really communicating what the challenges are, whether they're staffing challenges, whether they're technology challenges, you know, all of the nuances of your experience of moving into this new facility because especially given the crunch that we'll have next summer with three coming online, your experience is really valuable to make that go smoothly.
Yeah, and I also neglected to mention that Office of School Modernization has been absolutely incredible. Jerry has been very supportive. I feel very fortunate to work with Patrick and the team, Sarah and Sue at Roosevelt. And I'll be back here waving a red flag if the maintenance piece is not figured out because I, ultimately, it's my responsibility and right now I see a lack. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to address that soon.
You had 62 classrooms coming online. You had 48. What did you have before, in the old building?
How many classrooms?
Yeah.
I'll need to get back to you. I can check with you.
I'd be curious about that because of the difficulties we're having at St. Franklin and the argument surrounding Grant. I'd be curious. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. And please come visit.
Opening day.
It's amazing.
Really inspiring.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one won't be for me. We have a resolution next, yes? Okay.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
All right, so bond program contingency replenishment.
I'd like to have Jerry can present this item as well. Thank you.
So we've been discussing this since April. We were originally going to come forward in June and a few board members said we'd like to see the level of detail that came out of our bond improvement committee. It was more, this is what we feel it's going to need to make, to make this project whole. It was, let's see some more detail. We went back. We met with the contractor, with our team, analyzed things for June. And then we talked to Kevin and a few other BAC members. They met with us. We ran this by them. We had the good sense to run it by them as well and get their input as construction people. They wanted to see some more diligence done too, so they felt comfortable with it. So we discussed it. We brought it up in July's bond accountability to the full committee and reviewed the details. And what you see before you tonight is just a staff report talking about some of the things we've covered, the level of the unforeseen's out there, the pilot project, the first one to start, the old buildings and new construction at the same time. And so we feel that with contingency within this $6 million, if $6 million was moved over, we can make the project whole. We can get to the finish line on this. As Kevin mentioned, we still leave us with some program contingency. We still have bond premium for next early winter that Yusef can talk about and what those possible proceeds might look like from that. And then although we don't want to, because IP has been such a great story, but we do have some money sitting in the IP account right now, should it be necessary. And we've largely, we've done with this summer 51 projects. And I think somewhere in the information, we said we tried to do up to 63. So we've met a lot of that. And we've even gone overboard in some of those, like you just saw with Cleveland, with expending the additional $1 million to make those roofs safe. So when the ones we have met our commitments, we've actually exceeded. I was glad to actually have some of our project managers come to us and say, "Look how horrible this parking lot is." I think it was beat up before we got here. Contractors made it worse. It wasn't in our scope of work. Let's make this new on our way back out. So we've done some of those things. So, you know, we felt like we've given a lot of work to the IP. We've done a lot of great things with the IP. And so those are the other pots that are out there. But at this time, we're bringing Franklin before you, with the resolution to do the contingency replenishment. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
And so where does the program contingency stand with the sweep of this to the Franklin contingency?
So there's 10 million in the program contingency. This would be six. It would be at 4 million. We still have around 11 million in an IP contingency. And like Kevin talked about, there's still a million or so that's in the C, the chief of school modernization contingency that returns from projects and passes through. You can speak for me, Yusef. You think that we might get a six or seven million bond premium out of the proceeds of what's left, of which 2.8 would be identified for the Roosevelt acre space?
We could. I mean, it depends on the market at the time we issue the bonds, but that has been at least our experience in the last bond issuance we did.
And when is the next bond issued?
In the spring, next spring. Probably March, February.
So 11 and four and four, it's kind of, you're out there with about, you know, 20 million plus or minus 19 million overall program-wise with this being moved over. And certainly, if we get into, you know, August and it's not needed, it's returning itself back to the program.
And we have added to the program budget for grant for these specific area unforeseen expenditures on Franklin, right?
Yes, yes, but we have, we'll have, we have a different issue with grant in that being the last project in the bond, last large project, we can't go over. There's no more money. And so we'll look at some of those things as alternates. But also with a lot of these other, you've heard tonight, with anyone else who does pass a bond in November, we're looking at escalation factors, things that need to be taken into consideration that even though we might have made it a little more whole from a contingency standpoint for the unforeseen, we have concerns about starting this project next May and what that's going to look like from the construction and the bid climate at that time.
So just to follow up on the grant piece, Jerry, I don't have an exact number, but I have heard that right now it's about $40 million more than what we currently have is what the plan is.
No.
I heard that from the people on the DAG.
Yeah, no, you're hearing pretty closely. So the first take-
Yeah, so if you just let me know exactly what that is and how we plan to cover that, then I'd be, then I'd like to pass that information on to them.
And I'll talk about it because this is a lessons learned. You know, we just continued on with design on Franklin after the schematic. And then we found out that it was too much and we did 25, 30 million value engineering and it really tore the project apart. It tore the fabric of it apart, you know, some of the community, which also is part of the reason for replenishing Franklin and how to do a restart while you're under construction with some of the value engineering. So lessons learned from our performance auditor and bond accountability committee is even if you have to claim your delay two, three, four weeks, do not go into design development until you are whole on schematic design. And that's what we're doing. So first estimates for 38 million apart, so you haven't, you're not off on what you're hearing. But as of last week's meeting, they're at 4 million off right now. So, yeah. So we're, and we are not beginning the design development until we can look, as any project, let alone our last large one in this bond, we want to make it whole at each one of the phases before we go forward. So that's what we're doing.
And are you going to have, I'm sorry, can you provide me with a list of the differences? I mean, where you found that 34 million in that? Great. Thank you.
You bet. Others? All right. Thank you, Jerry. You're welcome. The board will now consider Resolution 5324, authorization of bond program contingency replenishment as part of the 2012 bond program. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Constan to adopt Resolution 5324. Ms. Hussey, any public comment?
No.
Any board discussion?
I'll just, I'm just going to, I'm going to be a no vote on this basically because I don't have enough information, I don't feel like right now. So thank you.
Can I ask Pam, what information are you missing?
I'd like more information.
I'm probably missing the same thing and just don't know it.
Well, I'd like some more information, just about all of it in a spreadsheet would be great or something like that. But I'm also very concerned about Grant and the ability to move that project forward in the way that the DAG came out with it. And I'm fearful of continuing cuts to it as we go along. I understand them being the last project.
So I would say this, anything regarding Grant would be your other bond premium, it would be your IP, it would be balance of program management. These are costs that are real to Franklin and we can wait, but they, we've been waiting actually since May in order to make it whole.
Well, I don't think you'll have to wait because I'm only one vote, but.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so we need to make Franklin. Thank you, Pam. The board will now vote on Resolution 5324. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, indicate by saying no.
No.
Any abstentions? The resolution is approved by a vote of four to one. With student representative Bradley voting?
Yes.
Voting, yes. All right.
Five to one.
One, two, three, four, five to one, excuse me.
We didn't say goodbye to Julie, went she would not be there.
No, we didn't. Five to ones. Thank you. Health and safety update.
I would like to invite Dr. John Burnham, our interim senior director of environmental health and safety, as well as Courtney Wilton, our interim executive director of operation. And we're going to give you a presentation instead of just, we're talking this way, you'll see some info and we'll give you a really good update today. Thank you.
Good evening. Courtney Wilton, interim director of operations.
Sean Burnham, interim senior director of environmental health and safety. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you for being here.
It's our pleasure. The two, the two interims. We're going to kind of briefly talk about where we are with our most pressing environmental issues and, you know, those with regard to lead in the water and lead in the paint. And John, do you want to talk about, John's going to talk about some longer-term stuff, which I'll let him explain right now.
Sure. I think an important distinction to make for you, and we have actually a couple of slides, maybe three slides that'll help along those lines. Let me just kind of start out so you'll make sure it's clear. I'm in the process of working on and ultimately completing, hopefully in a couple of months, what I call an environmental health and safety department gap analysis. That means what programs should the environmental health and safety department, which consists of three people, be responsible for at PPS? So that's one. That's one project. I already have a tentative idea about that. I just haven't been able to drill down, haven't had time. And it looks like the department should be responsible for between 45 and 50 different environmental health and safety programs. It's not just a number I'm going to throw out there, but it may be higher, maybe a little bit lower. Included in that are the obvious ones, water quality, lead paints. So those are just two programs out of the 45 to 50. Okay, so, and then separate from that is I'm working on an integrated team, the fourth bullet up there, to put together a, not a gap analysis, but rather identify among those 45 to 50 programs, which ones have the greatest impact, potential impact on the safety of our students and our teachers, employees in the schools. And that be looked in the context, if you get in the context and evaluate it in the context of a facilities condition assessment for those specific programs. My guess is that number will be between three and six, maybe, maybe eight of those 45s or so programs be pulled out. Once again, the high-impact programs, so. And there's some slides that help that clarify that as we go along here.
Thanks, John. Okay, you know, first I wanted to step back and just kind of look at, gosh, how did we, how did we get here with regard to the lead issues that we're having now? And I've had the, kind of the privilege of working and living in Portland for a long time. And I actually worked as a CPA early in my career and I actually worked on the Portland schools audit. And this was in the mid-'80s. And I can tell you, it was a different world then financially. Portland was, as most, you know, predominantly funded with property taxes. We had a supportive, very supportive public. We actually had a number of levies. We had a maintenance levy. I talked to one of our staff today who's been here forever, our lead painter, and I said, "Were the buildings in pretty good shape, you know, back in the, you know, the late '80s?" He said, "They really were. I mean, they still had some issues, but they were fundamentally in good shape." We spent a lot of money maintaining them and we had a very significant maintenance staff. And I said, "How many painters did you have?" And he said, "We had 20. We have two now." And so things have changed. And as you know, Measure Five passed and it fundamentally changed the way, as you know, how schools were funded. And we were a historically high-funded district and we, we got dragged down through the equalization process. And I'm not complaining about that, but I think it's important to understand that, you know, things have fundamentally changed. Funding's been very constrained, as you know, over the last 25 years. I think the board's done a good job of focusing dollars on the classroom, which is fundamentally what the public wants. We've had good results from that, but our buildings have suffered as a result and we're feeling the effects of that. What's also true is we've got an aging infrastructure, as do so many districts across the nation. We have, I think, an average age of around 75 years. Our buildings, they're classic. I mean, there's a lot of wonderful buildings, but they're, they're showing their age and they're showing their wear, basically. And also, I think it's important not to blame this all on funding, but acknowledge that our system did fail. I mean, we dropped the ball on a lot of things at the staff level and we just fundamentally made some mistakes. And, you know, we're sorry about it and I think we need to, you know, be forthright about that and be upfront and say, you know, "We blew it to a certain degree and we need to do a better job." And we're working on that. What I'm also seeing as kind of a new person is, you know, staff is really working hard on this. And I hope because of past mistakes, they don't get tarred by that such that, you know, people never, you know, feel like they're worthy of continuing to work on these problems because they just are. They care deeply about this. They're working hard at it. And if anything, this is, you know, additional stress on top of a environment that's also, you know, already very stressful. So I think we need to keep that in mind and, you know, praise them for the work they're doing now and kind of helping us dig out of that. I'm hopeful we can keep that in mind. Okay, so in terms of an overview, we have done a tremendous amount of testing and measurement over the summer. I'm going to share with you the results of that, those results. Even though they're tentative, they will be final soon. I want to emphasize, I believe our current environment is stable. It's not ideal. You know, we have a system that is going to be inconvenient and costly to a certain degree in terms of how we're going to deal with water, at least for a significant chunk of next year, but I believe it is safe. As John mentioned, he's working on some significant long-run analysis, which I think, assuming we implement, ultimately implement some of the recommendations, are going to put us in a better spot in terms of managing all sorts of risks that the district faces. And we're also working in the near term on trying to quantify some of these health and safety needs that we have such that, you know, you'll have the option of having a sense of what the price tag is to fix some of this stuff and put, you know, hopefully a chunk of that in a future bond request. And we're on a fast track with that because, you know, I'm not exactly sure what the timing is, but ultimately, if we are going to go out in May, I think you're going to need the information. but ultimately, if we are gonna go out in May, I think you're gonna need the information sometime in February, I would think, to adequately communicate with the public in terms of what the needs are, to what extent, sorry. Would that be helpful?
Before February.
Okay, all right, well, let's talk about that.
Long before February.
Okay. It's gonna take some time, and so we're gonna need to figure out, you know, how we meet that timeline, but that's a good discussion to have. What's also true is the state is getting more involved in kind of regulating health and safety at the school level, as I think a lot of you know, and I think it's in part because of the controversy that resulted from our troubles. And not too worried about it, I think we're ahead of the curve, given all the work that we've done. But we are gonna come up, I think, we obligated, as our other school districts, on October one to basically update our health and safety facilities plan, which deals with kind of the level of testing and how we communicate it, and that's fine. Okay, in terms of where we are with, with lead, we have done a lot of testing. One, one type of testing, or I guess I should call it a screening, I think that's the appropriate term, is we, a lot of people have come in, specifically students and staff, to have their blood tested. The totals right now, at least this is as of July thirty-one, and obviously, those totals have climbed, because we've had a couple, I think, clinics since then. But as of July thirty-one, we've tested over sixteen-hundred people. And there's, there's testing through three modes, as I think you're aware of. There's testing directly with Multnomah County, there's testing through some onsite clinics that, that we contact, we contract with, with Catalysts. And then there's also mail kits that people have the option of using. There were eleven of the sixteen-hundred and sixty-four people tested. Eleven had elevated levels. And I, I don't mean to make light of that, because I think anyone in that circumstance is, it's a serious circumstance. I am heartened by the fact that over ninety-nine percent of the people screened did not test high. And I'm also heartened by the fact that none of those eleven have, to date, been tied back to Portland Public Schools. It doesn't mean that there won't be a case tied back, so I don't want to send that message either, but to date, there hasn't been that connection made.
Courtney, I just had a quick question. So how do you determine that it's not tied back to Portland Public Schools?
You know, we don't. Once someone tests at an elevated level, the county takes over, and they do, you know, basically, an investigation to talk with that person, determine what other environments. John, go ahead.
Well, repeat the question, please.
So I was just wondering how we determine if you have an elevated blood lead level, it's not tied back to the school? So it sounds like the county...
What's the cause? It goes to the county, the county then takes over and identifies. It becomes a privacy issue with the patient, of course, always is.
Okay, I, yeah.
But the county will report that.
Okay, so they look at other exposure routes?
By the way, I just happened to read the, just happened to see the county's numbers for the past three years today. It was in a newspaper report, so I did, it's not on their website, and I'm sure even that's even available. But they, they tested in the past three years fifteen thousand people, and about a hundred and eighty-eight of them were above the elevated level. That's children and teenagers. So another number for you. That's about one point two percent, looks like we're around point seven percent right now.
Okay, thank you.
So we have, we have at least, I think, one more clinic scheduled, and then I think at some point, we're gonna stop doing that. And I think we will share final numbers with you, once they're available. And we should have them available, you know, in a couple of weeks. Okay. Here is a recap of the preliminary results for the, all the testing of the fixtures that we, that we did this summer. We tested almost eleven thousand fixtures, and we made the decision, you know, when we sized this engagement, to test not only drinking fountains, but all other fixtures as well. And that, you know, that's something that a lot of districts didn't do. I'm glad we did it. I think it gives us some information that's helpful in terms of kind of getting a sense of the condition of our infrastructure. A couple takeaways, and we also took two samples on this. So this is the first sample. We did a flush, flushing after the first, and before we do the second. I think what that means is the second, once we get the results back, will, will show lower, but we'll see. I don't want to presuppose that, but that's generally how it works. So the numbers are, are interesting. With regard to the other fixtures, you know, we have a significant number of fixtures that, that tested high, you know, almost forty percent. It's a big number. I don't think it's cause for alarm. What the health experts tell us, per se, is that lead is not absorbed through the skin, so unless you're drinking it, or somehow ingesting it through food preparation, or, or some other way, you're okay, you're safe. But I think the fact that we had such a significant percentage test high of other fixtures, you know, is a good reality check on the condition of our plumbing. And I think it's also affirmation that we want to be very vigilant in making sure people do not drink out of anything other than clear drinking fountains. That's what I take away from it. What's...
I just had a quick question for you.
Yes.
The other fixtures, are they, do they have filters?
I, I believe some do and some don't, but I'm, I'm not positive in terms of the breakout. But there are things like, I mean, you know, there, sinks would follow in that, for example. A shower would, a custodial closet would, a hose bib would. I mean, it's basically everything else in the, in the district. I'll bet you we have some filters in these, but I'll bet you it's not a lot, just because they generally weren't for drinking purposes.
Right, I think of students or faculty, for that matter, filling their water bottles at a sink instead of a drinking fountain.
I think that happened.
Is what, yeah.
And I'm hoping it doesn't happen anymore.
Me too. Thank you, thank you.
You bet. Okay, with regard to drinking fountains, we, you know, we had a fair number test positive on that as well, and that, that is absolutely of concern. We had two-hundred and forty-three that, at least on the first draw, were over the limit. And the acceptable level on that is zero. And, you know, so, so there you have it. Other questions?
Want to go back to the safety, you have forty to fifty different safety groupings, so to speak? Is that what you're talking about? Does that include, does that include ones that aren't connected with the recent things like asbestos? For instance, does it include playground safety?
Well, I actually brought a list here, because I knew that question may come up. So a good example of a number of those in that forty-five to fifty are facilities' operations, safety issues, occupational safety for the facilities' folks that need to reside in the EHS program. Things like ladder safety, things like fall safety, that aren't student-related. So that's still part of the role that EHS department should play inside PPS.
What about playground safety? Is that one of the things?
Playground safety is there also.
Playground safety, for instance, we still have custodians that don't lock up the big garbage deals, they're supposed to lock them up every night, and they don't do it. You go and they're...
Playground safety is also there.
That's in there, what about...
We do, one of my folks actually does surveys annually, looking at all the playground safety issues.
What about, like, gymnasium safety? We've got a lot of gymnasiums that were older, that have unsafe conditions maybe in them. Is that part of, will that be part of this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I think maybe we want to add that?
I'll take a look at that.
Superintendent, maybe? Because gymnasium safety's a pretty big deal. You've got, and for, and it's not so much that there's a lot of kids that get hurt, but when you get hurt in a gymnasium accident, you can get killed. I mean, literally, you fall into the wall that isn't padded underneath the baskets, that type, that type...
During the athletic event, you're talking about.
Athletic, or how, what you have, what you're storing in the gymnasium. There's, there's all sorts of gymnasium safety problems, and problems also surrounding other facilities in the school, like things in, in a shop area, things in, things in auditoriums?
Yes.
Safety?
Shop safety should be certainly the responsibility of the instructor.
Theoretically, yes, but sometimes they're not as good, maybe, as they should be, those types of things. They don't, a lot of people just don't see safety, so kind of that's... And then, the other one that I'm concerned somewhat about is, is spraying. We're supposed to be an IPM school district. That was passed years ago by the school board, and, yep, and we're, and we're... I'm not a hundred percent sure that that has still been passed down. Whoever's doing those types of reading and so forth needs to know that. And I'm not sure, those are just things, I have a real strong interest in that. We, at one point, did a pretty good job, they were going to spray up at, up at Robert Gray Middle School down across, and I had to go get that stopped. We weren't stopping it ourselves, even though we, that was on our property, that the county was going to spray, but we're supposed to be, we're, we're supposed to be an IPM thing, and I'm not sure if, how accurate that is taking place.
You don't have a spraying pesticides, herbicides?
Yeah, are we?
That's actually on the list already.
Yeah, yeah, and we're not supposed to be applying them on the schools and the, except there's a, it's a very narrow thing.
I'm familiar with that, where I've worked previously.
The playground safety, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. I've worked on that for the last forty years, actually, more than that.
I'll see you two at those three.
For instance, automobiles, do we have, we have automobiles that park on our playgrounds? It's a bad idea.
So vehicle safety.
Things to that, yeah, safety.
On campus.
Yeah, just, you know, playground and in gymnasiums, particularly, the two biggies. Thank you very much.
You bet.
It's wonderful to have somebody online who's focused on that.
You're making my point about the large number.
Yeah, it's a huge number.
You just added three to them.
Yeah. Thank you.
A lot of folks don't realize how many programs an environmental health and safety program, department can be responsible for. It is quite large. Some take, some take one day a year, some take every day of the year.
Right.
All of them.
And the follow-through is not always there, because people, there's a lot of people that just kind of go, eh, eh, safety, I'm eh... And, and if those people are your custo, if that person is your custodian, we had a situation where we were worried with just how our flagpole, you don't think about the flagpole ropes, except we had a school where it was a problem, because there was a child that continually tried to hang themselves on it.
Yeah, one thing, of course, that I, I will do in regard to issues like that is I'll be looking at about the past three to five years of workers' comp records. That gives me an idea, at least, about the workers, and any kind of records also about students, to let me look and see what has actually happened, because that's a critical way.
We keep student injury forms, I'm sure.
Yeah.
All right, Mike?
So Courtney, just one thing quick. I think I heard you say on the, the drinking fountains, we're saying that zero is the safe level for lead?
That's correct.
Okay, so, just to distinguish it from the fifteen parts per billion?
Well, no. Zero fountains testing over the fifteen parts per, per billion is acceptable. In other words, of the, whatever that total is, basically twenty, almost twenty-three hundred, there were two-hundred and forty-three that tested over that fifteen parts per billion level. And the acceptable level of numbers that test over the fifteen is zero. We, as you know, we don't want any fountains that have water in them that test over that limit.
Right.
Does that make sense? So I'm not saying the level has to be zero. I'm saying it needs to be essentially fourteen or, or below, to be within the federal standard.
Okay, so that's what I want to clarify.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
So we may, we may have, elevated, we're defining elevated lead as fifteen or higher.
We are, yes.
Okay, not zero.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Did you, and so, let me ask this, then, did you, what's the percent, then, of the twenty-seventeen that have detectable levels of lead? Is that a statistic?
I don't know, we could gather that.
I'd be interested in hearing that.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it's a manual process. You know, we've, we've posted all of these to the web, and so we've got to go through and grab each of the fountains out of there, and then look to see what the levels are. We could do it, I mean, it would take some time.
I think parents would want to know, and I think maybe, like, what the average value is, but whatever, anyway.
Yeah, we can, we can do some more work on that. All right, so we're, you know, kind of where we are now and where we're headed with regard to water quality. All our fountains have been essentially covered up or inactivated for the start of school. There's a photo in here at some point, you know, you can, you can see it here. So it's not the most visually appealing, I wish we didn't have to do it, but, but we need to do it, given the measurements that have been recorded. We have arranged for alternate drinking water source, and it's, you know, again, there's a photo here to, to show you. It's, I think it's a better system than you had in place at the end of last year. It's not a million disposable bottles, but we do have, you know, some larger ones in there. Still inconvenient, there's an expense involved, but again, I, I think it beats the alternative. We have add, added a significant amount of signage. You know, one of the recommendations we received appropriately was that we make it real clear that any room that has a fixture that's not a drinking fountain needs to be signed, that makes it real clear that it's not used for drinking purposes. And, and we're in the process of doing it. We may even have it completely done by now. So essentially, every room that has some type of fixture in it, be it a sink, or, you know, essentially, anything, will have one of these signs on the door, and in fact, maybe even both sides of the door. And we're working on a kitchen opening plan. Kitchens will be open for the start of school. You know, about, if you look at the data, about half of the kitchens' fixtures are fine, about half of them aren't, at least have, you know, one sink within their area that tested high. In talking with the program director, it's not practical to, you know, do one menu for half and, and one for the other. So we're going to open school with pre-washed food, which is what we did, I believe, last year. There's an expense involved in that, it's not ideal, but what we're also gonna do is work towards clearing those other fixtures over the month of September, and try to get back to a regular, you know, operating procedure by, you know, hopefully by October.
Hi, my name's David Hobbs, I'm the senior director for facilities and asset management with Portland Public Schools. I wanted to talk with you today about our plan for water in the schools in the fall, to reassure you and your kids what our plan of action is for start of school. So I want to make sure that you're aware that we will have safe drinking water in the form of bottled water and dispensers located throughout our schools. That will be the critical piece for you to help educate your kids as they come to school, make sure that they're focused on, on drinking out of the dispensers. I wanted to let you know that washing your hands in the sinks in the bathrooms is perfectly safe. There is no issue with that whatsoever, and we are, are going to make sure that only sinks are open for washing hands. There will be no drinking fountains that are open. They will either be bagged or shut down during the course of the year, and sinks that are available are specifically for handwashing purposes. We'll have signage up on all doorways with water fixtures behind them, again, helping to educate the students on the fact that they're only supposed to be washing their hands. They're not supposed to be drinking the water out of the fixtures in the classrooms. I also wanted to make sure that you're aware, we would strongly encourage your students to bring their own refillable water bottles to school for use, but I do want to assure you, we will have cups at every dispenser for students to drink out of. Students will have access to as much drinking water as they would like during the course of their day. We also have a plan in place for food preparation in our kitchens, to provide safe food for all of your kids in our schools. This will include initially, pre-washed food and pre-prepared food that does not involve water systems. We'll be working to reopen those water systems as the school year progresses, and we'll have safe water in the schools for preparing foods. For those of you with kids in sports, I wanted to make sure you're aware, we will have safe drinking water for after-school sports, weekend sports programs. Kids will have access to safe drinking water at all of their sporting events.
Okay, so looking forward, you know, we still need to analyze a second sample. I think if anything, it's gonna show lower overall positives than the first one did, but we need to take a look at that, and we don't want to take that for granted. We need to look at this whole procedure we have in place for filtering. I mean, we have a number of filters out there on the fountains, and, you know, there's, there's legitimate questions about, are we using the right type of filter? And are we maintaining them correctly? And we need to figure that out before we release these fountains, because I'm not certain we are. And, and again, we just need to have a kind of an ironclad plan in place, both in terms of the type of filter and our maintenance procedures, before we get back into using the related fixture. We are in the process of contracting with an independent third party in terms of, you know, once we get the data, both the first and second draws. We are in the process of contracting with an independent third party in terms of, um, you know, once we get the data, both the first and second draws, you know, how do we fix this thing? And, you know, part of it will be fairly straightforward in terms of, you know, replacement of water fixtures, there'll be piping replacement, of course. There's other protocols we use which actually may be pretty effective and not very expensive, you know, like a flushing protocol that, that we might be able to rely on. And, and ultimately, we also need to develop a database of all these fixtures. I mean, it's a big job in that there's, I don't know what that number is, you know, thousands of thousands, but it's, it's important that we keep track of these so that we have a, a record of each one, basically, so that when something isn't happening, we have a sense of, of the history of it. You know, people are going to ask legitimately, if you look at the data, we had about twelve percent of the drinking fountains which tested high. And we also had a few that tested high for copper, and so, you know, some of them were, were on the same fixture, some independent. So I think the overall fail rate per se was probably thirteen or fourteen percent. Well, that means around, you know, roughly eighty-five percent didn't test high. And I think there's going to be questions as, so when can we open those fountains? And I think the answer for now is we need to hang in there, we need to, again, get this other sample, we need to figure out this whole filtering protocol. And we need to wait for recommendations from this independent third party. And, again, it's inconvenient, there's an expense involved, but, um, in my opinion, it's the lesser of the evils. We don't want to rush out and, and put anything back in service and then have any type of mistake or regret later. And, again, I think it's just the world we're in, we are working on it, we are going to make progress on it. We are going to get to a point where we're, we're releasing them for, you know, back in operation, but we're not there yet. And we also think about, need to think about communication in terms of, well, are we, are we going to be okay with releasing one school and not the other? And, and we might be, we just need to kind of think through that.
Does everyone understand the business about the first and second draw, is that clear to everyone? Okay.
All right. In addition to, um, I'm sorry, are we okay?
No, go ahead.
Okay, in addition to our, our lead in the water challenges, we also have some lead paint challenges. And, um, you know, the good news is, you know, again, as I talked to our longtime staffer today, and, you know, we were going through the, the outstanding list of, of paint needs. We have a database of about twenty-two hundred items, I mean, it's, it's extremely comprehensive and voluminous. And each one is rated in terms of the severity, and, and we do look at that and we do prioritize, and, um, it's not a bad system. The, the problem is we haven't, the problem is we just haven't done enough painting in recent years. And, um, and so we still have a lot of unmet needs out there. Now, you know, with, with the board's help and support and the money you've allocated recently, we were able to do a lot of painting this summer. We've done more this summer, you know, and again, I got a reality check from our, our staff person, but we've done more this summer than we have over the last twenty years, basically. And, and we've hit about twenty-six schools to date, and we think we're going to hit around forty by the start of school. And so we've made real progress and it's heartening, and we've taken care of some real problem areas. And, and again, I, I thank you for that. It, it doesn't mean each school has been completely repainted, but it does mean they've gone into each school, they've looked at what we think are the most critical areas. And they've also, you know, had the discretion to, hey, if you see anything out there that, that looks like it really needs your attention, go ahead and, and take care of it while you're out there. So, so we're making progress. Now, what's also true is, um, we have a lot of unmet needs out there, meaning there's some exterior areas that are flaking, there's some windows that are flaking, some siding. And we need to be really careful about that. I, I don't believe, I mean, we've really talked about it, I don't believe there's anything out there that's, um, that's dangerous. But, uh, it's not something to be taken lightly, and we need to kind of keep an eye on it. And also have some kind of procedures in place for the custodians. I mean, we, we kind of do now, but I think we need to reemphasize with them, okay, if, if you're, you know, see paint chips out there, here's the appropriate protocol to use to take care of that. And I, I think we're going to design some type of communication to the schools just to kind of acknowledge that this risk is out there and we need their help in, in managing it. What we're also doing is we're bringing a third party in to help us look at our program, you know, kind of from a different vantage point and use our expertise maybe to make some changes in, in how we do a few things. But, but the biggest problem with, with our current program is we just haven't simply done enough in the past to keep up with the deterioration that occurs. And, uh, and we're, we're doing a better job of that, thanks to, to your help. Anything else in the gap?
Oh, this is, uh, for you, you've got in your notes, I think, don't you? Okay, this is a little bit about, this is kind of a descriptor of what I shared with you at the very beginning, uh, to make sure you make the distinction between the gap analysis and the department as opposed to the assessment of the environmental health and safety impacts on the schools.
Okay.
So, no need to read it to you, just wanted to make sure you had it. Same thing, this is the, the EHS FCA.
Right? That concludes our report.
Good, thank you very much. I've been doing some great work. Steve?
Even though we're talking about fifteen parts per million, I assume what our goal is zero parts per million in the water in our schools. I assume that's our goal.
So you're PP.
I just don't want to confuse, I don't want to confuse people in the public by thinking that we're shooting to make sure that we're down under fifteen parts per million. In the long run, we should be, we're shooting for zero parts per million in our drinking water.
Sure.
I was, yeah, I, I just didn't want to get into you. Secondly, and, and are we prioritizing portable classrooms in our drinking fountains? In other words, it's a, it's a lot harder if you're teaching children in a portable to worry about kid wants a drink, then you got to send him inside. Or, as opposed to, we should have, our portables should be prioritized for drinking, to make sure each of those has water in it.
I can check into that, what we've done is we've placed, uh, one of these big, you know, five gallon containers, essentially everywhere there was a drinking fountain.
Yeah, exactly, and the, but the portables themselves need drinking water in them, because the kids go in and out, in and out. Hey, I want a drink, then they're, then, I think, we make sure that we think in terms of educational things, and that's a really big time educational thing. If you're in a portable, and the reason I kind of know that is because I taught in portables for ten, the last ten years I taught about. And we had a drinking fountain in the room, and I'll tell you, it'd driven you nuts if you hadn't, because kids, hey, I need to go, I'm thirsty, I can't go, and all, and, and, and there's the drinking fountain.
Yeah, I think, I think it gets into the objective of what we're trying to accomplish here, if it's to have drinking water where we had it in the past, um, we've done that. If it's to enhance the.
Yeah, right, and I'm just saying that, that maybe that's not the.
But, but that's a different issue, but we can, we can talk about it.
But it's a good issue. Uh, I think that there's a couple other safety things that I had, which, one is traffic safety around the school. That's been a huge issue in the past for safety. We had a problem at Fabian when they're out here with the bicycles coming down. And the, and big issue last year at, I think it was Caesar Chavez, but I can't remember exactly, about the traffic and how that works. So traffic safety is a big one. And another one that we're not looking at as hard as we should probably is our security. You can walk right into certain schools, nobody even there sees you or whatever, so, and the security people who are there. That whole security situation needs to be, uh, looked at better. One of the things that, that, we just hadn't been looking at that stuff carefully necessarily. And the fact that you're taking a look at that, I think that's wonderful, that we're moving direct, moving in those directions. And the other, the last question that I have is actually, I think, for Jerry about, uh, when we're building the new schools, did we go and test the water source in them? You know what I'm saying, because everything that we're testing basically is in the fountain, but we're building a new school and putting in all new plumbing. But what about the water source in the bottom? At the, the, are we looking at that? If that water source is contaminated, it's a problem. I mean, and that's where a lot of people look at that when they build the building, are, are, are we taking it into account at all, have we thought about it?
If you're asking if we did test before we did any renovation, I don't know, it was before.
That's what.
You're asking if we're going to take samples of like some of the new Roosevelt building.
No, I was asking if we, if we tested the source, the original source or, or not. Yeah, it might be worth looking at, save us a lot of trouble if we put in all that plumbing and all of a sudden, Ringo, you got, the source is a bad one. I don't know how the water, I'm not smart enough on this, to know how the water works coming in. Do you have more than one source into one building or what, I don't know. But it's, it's certainly, I think, worth looking at.
You're talking about the, the water main, the source?
Yeah, yeah, the main water source. It, I don't know how that runs in a building, does it come in the same place, you got a bad one coming in, and, and I don't know exactly, but I, I just think that.
Portland has one of the cleanest.
I've read a lot lately, and that's one of the things they look at.
Portland has one of the cleanest, uh, sources of water coming through the bureau.
Yeah.
Uh, Water Port, Water Bureau of any city in the country.
Right, but they have the, they have, the problem is that a lot of cities put in the stuff that don't degrade the pipes, and, and we don't. So I don't know how that comes out in the end, in the overall thing, but you're correct, yeah, yeah. Except that our pipes, that's one of the reasons we're having so much trouble, is because they don't treat the water to not degrade. I'm, I'm reading up on it all the time, so, but not that I'm an expert, but yet, I am an expert on playground safety though.
Yeah, you say.
First, I want to thank both John and Courtney.
Yeah.
They've been an incredible resource for the district. We have, we have, we put a really great team together, we meet daily, every day, uh, to discuss health and safety and how we address things as they come. It's, it's fluid, it's changing, there's a lot of things that we're, we're dealing with. And, and we really have, have really great team between both these gentlemen and, and Joe Greeler and David Hobbs, Courtney Ristling, and Jerry as well, he joins us every morning in this huddle, and, and we take this really seriously. The, the students' health and safety is number one priority. And back to your question, Steve, about the security, um, I have had a meeting, have it today, as a matter of fact, to discuss security, whether it's cameras or staff. So we are working on it, we're, we're looking at making an assessment and come back with a recommendation when we, what we need to do about that. There is significant amount of work that need to be done there.
Yeah, okay.
It would require a lot of resources. Our issues, gonna need a lot of money, I mean, let's face it, it's, it's not gonna, it's going to be costly. Everything we're looking at is going to cost a lot of money. As far as the, um, the, the work that's going to take, it's going to take some time. And I, I just want to ask people for really some patience, it's, it's, you know, we can rush it, we can hurry it up, when we rush things, we'll make mistakes. And so, so we just need to be mindful that we're really working really hard. As Courtney said, we've done more work in this summer than we've done probably over the last twenty years. That's significant amount of work that's happening, um, and, and we're trying to do it really quickly at the same time planning. So we're, we're flying a plane and trying to learn it at the same time, it's, it's a significant amount of work that's happening. The other thing I want to share and, and really acknowledge is, is our staff, whether they're custodians or maintenance staff. I know this is hard, this is hard for a lot of folks, it's hard for us, and it's easy to point finger and, and accuse them that they're not doing their job. I, I really want to appreciate what they do, because they're working extremely hard. And, and the last thing I want to say is that they're being faulted for something, it's not really their fault, it's, it's a system issue. We have failed as a system, we have not invested in the district maintenance. When I looked at the data, um, over the last thirty years, we probably cut down the funding on maintenance probably by fifty percent. I mean, I, I won't be exaggerating if I say that. We have focused our resources on the classroom, which is legit, and that's where we need to go. But we have neglected the maintenance area. So we can't fault the staff for it, I, I just want to acknowledge the work they do, it's really hard work, um, and I want to thank them for the work they're doing. So just, just, let's just be mindful of that. We're trying everything in our power to do in order to deliver safe schools for our kids.
Are we, are we, while you're talking about systems and, I, you know, I'm a big custodial fan, but one of the things that we have had problems with in the past was prioritizing the safety work in our schools, the, the small things, the, the taking, the, taking off the gang writing, the hole in the floor, the rats running out, the, the, the stuff that's going to fall off the ceiling, the immediate safety things. Are we thinking in those terms and reprioritizing, I mean, and setting up a better system? Because we should be, we're shorthanded, there are no question, but we should be prioritizing things so we're out doing the things that are the most important with the people that we have. And I don't really think we were doing a good job of that before.
I can't speak about it, but this is what I can tell you today. In, in bringing Dr. Burnham on board and moving health and safety into risk management, that's exactly the thinking behind this. We're taking all these as risks, and, and we're making assessment on all these risks to come up with strategies to address them. And, and when, when Dr. Burnham's saying forty-five, probably to fifty different programs, all of these are risks. Issues that affect the safety and, and the security and the health of the kids and the staff. So we're working on all of these to prioritize and based on risk, and then find out what strategy we can deploy to, to address that. So there's, there's a lot of that work will come out, and if we miss anything, we'll have opportunity to share it with the stakeholders that we have all our union representatives and our custodians and maintenance and, and staff to chime in and then help us in that process. We're engaging everybody in this work.
I don't know, we, we, so we are looking at that, is that outside of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Long answer, but yes.
It's just, I'm not sure we had a system set up that prioritized, it was a who yells the loudest system to some degree. And some of the immediate things that can be fixed with somebody going out and fixing it are different than the lead in the water. An example was at Lincoln High School where they, where the, the vents were not good enough down below, I mean, it was horrible. There were kids getting ill just because we hadn't gone out and fixed those vents, which took somebody a couple hours to go out and analyze and see what was taking place. And it only got done because I was yelling about it. It didn't get done, it'd been turned in several times before, but nobody done, because we didn't have a system that prioritized and said, okay, we need to go take care of this. I don't know if it's a, takes a long period or what it is, or how it would work, but we need to have something that every, every, every principal who puts in a, who puts in a, a health and safety concern knows that they're going to be treated the same as everybody else and that they're going to be, we're doing the best we can to get to those, that's all I'm saying.
We don't, we, I can't say today we have the system in place, we're working on developing that.
Yeah, right.
In, in taking every isolated incident on its own, it may look really bad. But when you look at the amount of work orders we get collectively, it's a significant number of those. So I can't look at one and say, yes, I can deploy somebody for two hours because some, some board member raised it, because that's an easy thing to say. But when you have thousands of these, then you got to look at these work orders and say which one is riskier than the other.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, we should have a which one's riskier than the other.
Correct, correct.
And, but it, that needs to be almost a daily assessment versus the overall assessment. That's all I'm saying, and, and so if you got a, if you have, something breaks down and kids are going to fall and, fall down fifteen feet and get hurt because your railing broke, that's a much more serious thing than, okay, we have some lead paint that's not chipping. That's all I'm saying, and we, and we need to have a, we need, I think we need to systematize that.
I agree.
I might just add to your comment that, uh, an EHS program or department is most effectively and efficiently managed when you have a way to assign risk to a particular program or activity. And, uh, the way to do that is to consider, based on information from risk management, student entries, uh, the data we already have, to look at probability and severity, uh, when you look at those two different components. And it, you, you, on the data you have, sometimes you don't have data, you have a pretty good idea. If you have something very, very severe outcome, but it hasn't happened yet, you've still got to give that some attention.
Yeah, right, that's, that's the tricky part.
I think that, that is the best way to run an EHS program, but with fifty programs, it's going to take a while to prioritize. it's going to take a while to prioritize that. And as Youssef said, I mean, that's why he put this, the EHS department over in risk because it's a natural fit to be there, even though EHS works very closely with facilities all the time. And so, often they're there, but being in risk is also a great place for them to be, especially when you want to run it from the standpoint of risk. So, we're going to have to do something like you're talking about for each of those programs.
Does, are we freeing up custodians more? Now, I don't know if recently, but in the past, we had custodians unable to take care of small things. They couldn't fix something maybe without going downtown to the, to the maintenance department. Have, are we, is that still in place strongly or is that, are we dealing with that? I mean, it was, it was quite a prohibition that we had on our custodians for what they could do. And it came about through the labor agreements and so forth. So, do we still have that in place? Do we know?
We can find out.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to look at because we want to free up those custodians to know that they can, geez, if you have this little problem, they can fix it if they want, if that's the case. I don't know if it is. But that's certainly something that is worth looking at. Because that would help us a lot if our custodians could do more than maybe what they thought in the past. Thank you for coming.
Thank you both for a great report.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Board will now vote on the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 5324, 5325. Board members, are there any items you'd like to pull or separate discussion?
We're doing the whole thing, 5323, we have a couple questions on.
Okay. So, we will vote on everything except 5323. Ms. Houston, is there any changes to the business?
No.
Does anybody like to comment?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, and second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Directors Anthony and Knowles. Any discussion? Thank you, Pam.
Yeah.
The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by vote six to zero with student representative-
Yes.
Voting yes. All right. On 5323, in order to discuss it, we need somebody to move it.
So moved.
Been moved by Director Anthony. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Rosen. Discussion?
And I apologize to the staff for not letting you know about this earlier, that I had a question on it. My mistake. You've got the last one, which is the digital resources. Provide a career and college readiness tool to enable students, counselors and parents to plan, track student goals and promote college and career readiness and results. We got $182,000 on that. What do we got, what do we got here for $182,000? I can, it's one of those things I end up, it's one of those things I end up trading off against something else and going, whoa, that's a chunk of change for that. And does it really, is it making a difference? And this is also an option to renew annually, and we have a maximum contract term of $425,000, and we're sitting on a promote college and career readiness and results. I don't, I don't know. Any chance, if nobody's, my apologies, is there any chance to table this? Is that a problem?
Well, it would depend on, if other people wanted to.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, if anybody wanted to, but I, would it be, I was just asking if I-
So, we would have to, I'm sorry, just a process question. We'd have to all vote if we wanted to table it, or could Youssef just table it?
We'd have to vote.
It's a little late to withdraw it because it's here. I guess. Okay, I'll move to table this to the next, to the time certain, table to time certain, which is the next meeting. And I do apologize for this, it was my error.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Youssef, I guess my question to you is, is this time sensitive?
Quite honestly, I don't know. Harriet is not here to answer.
Yeah, and that's what was the problem, I wish I, I'm stupid.
This is a, this is a college, high school planning track, is somebody from high school there?
On-time graduation initiatives.
Yeah. How about, we got the IT person here, would he know?
It's, that was my question. It's not Naviance, but my question would be, how does it interact or supplement Naviance?
You guys know? I'm asking, is this Naviance? This is Naviance? Oh. Well, this is the, this is the program that we've had years-
It's the primary contract for Naviance?
-in our high schools to help students do exactly what does it.
This is a program we've had for years.
It doesn't refer to it as such.
I think, I think we're unclear, so I think maybe-
Yeah, yeah.
...and coming back to what it is, the subject is still in this conversation.
Yep.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is tabled until next time. All right.
Just this one?
Yes.
Or all of us, just this?
Yeah, just that one. The next meeting of the board will be held on September 6th.
Are we voting on these? Or we tabled, we tabled this one?
We tabled, we tabled the Hobson one.
Just the one that-
But we haven't voted on these yet. So, we need to vote on the rest of the ones that are two questions.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, yeah. All right. So, on the rest of 5323 minus the Hobson.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Abstention passes six to zero with student representative.
Yes.
Yes.
Whatever, I'm still suspended.
All right. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.